Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Bethel School's Board of Education Work Session. It is 5:07 PM. Brandon, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Kate?
Here.
Ms. Reese?
Present.
Sebastian?
Here.
Mr. Eamon?
Here.
Ms. Mansfield?
Here.
All right, next, possible new agenda items?
Take a look at, emailed you guys the memorandum of understanding for the supplemental positions. It's not on the agenda, but I have some handouts to discuss.
Okay, so we'll add discussing MOUs with supplemental positions. And then I thought one that I'd like to bring up would be talking, discussing drug testing as well.
And then the third item, sorry, would be, it's gonna be difficult with three folks, sorry, you guys probably can't hear me, with a couple of folks that aren't in attendance, but I do have a rough draft rubric for you guys to take a look at, and I can email it to the three that aren't in attendance tonight as far as the upcoming architectural interviews. I would highly recommend that we have a rubric in place for scoring of the four firms. Standard practice as we did during the selection of the master facilities plan firm as well. It came directly from OFCC, so it's gonna need to be tweaked a little bit. The good thing is, we can make it to how it fits us, but I think it gives you guys a good idea of kind of what we're looking for during that process.
All right.
I have some copies tonight, and then I can email it out as well. At least we'll have a week to kind of change it. I can change it to however you guys want to see it, so that we have that in place for the eighth.
Okay, anything else? All right, next is hearing the public regarding agenda items. Seeing none. Just click around, check in all the sources for those questions. Doesn't look like we have any. So... Moving forward, will be looking at number four as important dates to know for the district?
No, they don't have those attached yet.
No worries, that'll be what we'll be presenting anyways at the regular board meeting, so be looking for those.
She put executives to the public.
Yeah.
They're all, I mean, she attached them all as executives. Well, several of them should be executive, like, I was gonna say. Okay. But the Metro, I'm sorry. Do you need those? Well, I mean, they may want to look at them, I don't know.
Well, I can pull up the board docs from my sign-in to see them. So, as well as the ones that are out, not here virtually, as we go through, point out ones that you want.
Okay.
So next up will be items associated, wait, where are we adding this thing? Superintendent's items requesting board action?
We have a couple of items this evening for you guys to consider. First one is the approval of our bus routes. As you can see from the recommendation action, it is state law that every year you have to have your bus routes approved by the school board. And then there's also a little disclaimer in there that I hope you guys would allow, as far as routes need to be changed throughout the year. So, it allows myself and also Mrs. Rhodes, our transportation director, to change, adapt, and adjust transportation routes as we add new families to the district, or if there's significant road construction where routes need to be altered or changed. So far, at the start of the year, the transportation, I think, has gotten off to a much better start than last year. That's a credit to Mrs. Rhodes for getting those routes put together, and then getting them out in a timely manner. And I think a couple of additions that we've done this year would be adding rough estimates of times as far as the arrival and drop-off of those buses, which I think helps families prepare as far as knowing when to be out and ready for stops. So, that's the first item that's on there for approval. Second item has to do with middle school cheerleader. To be higher in a position to fill this, so that we can obviously have middle school cheer move forward. Our current high school advisor was trying to cover both, and it was too much to do high school and middle school. And we're able to secure Christina Brooks to fill that role. And her resume should be attached as well. Those are the only two items that I have.
Okay. Motion place items from the superintendent's report on the consent calendar? I'll move. Thank you, Danny.
I'll second. This is Lori.
Thank you, Lori, for the second. Any discussion?
So, yeah, Jacob, this is Julie. I couldn't hear any of that, but the only question I had was, I don't think we've ever had to approve anything with the bus routes. So, I'm not sure if we missed it in the past, and I don't ever remember approving, proving that on the list.
I was on the same page with you. What you might, Mr. Furks advised that it's an annual requirement that the board approve bus routes? From?
The revised code.
The revised code requires us to approve those each year, so.
Interesting, okay. I have no problem either way, it's just we never did it.
Yes.
So that's it, that's it.
Okay, any other? Okay, Brandon, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Eamon?
Yes.
Ms. Sebastian?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. And next is motion to adopt a consent calendar with items from the superintendent's report?
I'll move. This is Lyda.
Thank you, Lyda. Do we have a second?
This is Julie. I'll second.
Thank you, Julie, for the second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank Gail for all her work and all the bus drivers. I know the first few days are always a little, I don't want to say stressful, but exciting and busy. And I think everything went pretty smoothly this year, so I just wanted to thank her. In fact, I had a parent come up to me and said, "Did you know this?" And I said, "Well, actually, we have software now that determines the route." So, it was a really interesting conversation.
All right. Brandon, could you call the vote?
Ms. Mansfield?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
All right, next up, treasures items?
Board, on the 14th, I have the following items for approval, the board minutes from August, August 4th and August 10th. August 24th, I were still working on, I actually got it today, so most likely those will be on on the 14th as well for approval. Payment of bills for August, I was able to close out today. I sent you guys the financial report, August financial report. Permanent appropriations, I just added this afternoon, because I was able to close, but these are the current permanent appropriations for the fiscal year. I will let you know the general fund will most likely change next month, as I didn't have enough time to go through everything, as well as we have this past pay was the first pay for new teacher contracts, as well as this pay coming up will be the new rates for our insurance. So, once I know what everybody elected or changed, I'll have a better estimate for the remainder of the year. So, most likely you'll see amended appropriation for that next month. Donations, the Bethel Elementary PTO was gracious enough to donate $2,000, and this went towards, with COVID, we had to purchase separate malls, all kinds of playground equipment for each home room. So, the PTO pitched in to cover a majority of that cost.
Oh, that's awesome.
So, with Ms. Petty, they worked together to get that situated. Yes, well, each one has their own bag of recess equipment, or share, they just share with their classroom. Thank you to the PTO for doing that. Yes, thank you, PTO. Sounds like something that could have been done a long time ago. Keeping, yeah, all the equipment separate and that kind of thing, identifiable. So, it's actually gone pretty well, so I was impressed. They've also been able to use the football field, a lot of green space area to just run around and play. So, it's been, it's been good, too, as far as providing some additional green space for the kids to utilize. Then we have two new funds, 510 is related to the additional CARES money. I think we're budgeting to use it to purchase the additional Chromebooks that we have purchased for at-home online learning. We're gonna use it to pay for unemployment costs that we've had, because since the schools were closed, there was no work available. We had unemployment costs related to our subs. But to use it towards, we purchased some additional equipment, three backpack sprayers, one for each building to help with cleaning. Also gonna allocate some just in case, if anybody needs to be quarantined, we can get reimbursed for that, because they automatically, by federal law, get 10 days, and we don't use any other sick time. But that's the majority of that. And then Ollie Mills from elementary got another grant through the library, Service and Technology Act CARES grant, for $3,000. And then the last one is the every year to approve the application to participate in state and federal programs.
Excellent.
And that's all I have.
All right, superintendent's items for the next meeting?
Item A is, has to do with a review and educational degree status change. Give credit to Warren Wolford for moving from a bachelor's degree to a master's degree, step seven. I enjoyed hearing about the lengthy dissertation that she had to write for her program, so I'm sure she's excited to be done. She said it ended up being like 130 pages long, quite the project. A second item has to do with leave of absence. Molly Whedeman, who was one of her two high school guidance counselors, will be starting leave approximately October 26th, 2020, for FMLA leave, and wish her best of luck as her husband gets to welcome a new child to Bethel Public Schools family. Good luck to her. And then, letter C is one that we do annually to approve all of the subs that are on the Miami County Educational Service Center list that can be utilized for Bethel Public Schools for the 2020, 2020-long school year. And this is one that you'll see pop up frequently, because every time the list changes, we have to reapprove it. And you'll see it throughout the year.
That's created confusion amongst us in the past, like, didn't we just vote that in?
Yeah.
Prove that?
It's a little bit of a hassle, but there's an easier way to do it, and unfortunately, there's not.
Okay.
So, letter C is one you'll see reoccurring throughout the year. Number eight, items for discussion, has to do with valid Sal policy. I was able to send you folks an email, I also have some copies here as well. For a hard copy. Ms. Mansfield, Mrs. Reese, Ms. Sebastian, were you able to access it through?
Yes, I have the email.
Okay, so I just spoke with Mr. Swob this morning, and asked him to send me, or yesterday, and asked him to send me an updated one. And I got it, I think, this morning, and I forwarded it on to you guys to take a look. So, I haven't had a lengthy time to be able to go through it, but with other things going on in the building in the district, but he did present a couple of options, so I guess this will provide you folks the time to, I guess, briefly review it, and then provide any input, insight, or things that you would like to see addressed or changed, or things that you disagree with. So with that being said, I'd leave it open for you guys to make any comments.
Yeah. I guess now, really, we have to decide is, do we want to, as you guys review it, I like the fact they gave us option one and option two, because that's kind of the areas we were all discussing, how we wanted to do valedictorian, salutatorian. Option one was what we had kind of discussed, was anyone with a 4.0s on a greater, on an unweighted scale, will be recognized as valedictorian.
Can I make a comment here?
Sure.
I like this one, if I'm reading it correctly, because it will enable anyone that is a fine arts student, newspaper, business, and so forth, to be eligible. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah. Unless there's other items that are, you know, those are add-on items, but for option one.
Yeah, and in option one, we may want to specify or the two top highest grades as valid Sal, because it's possible some year, we wouldn't have somebody get a 4.0 unweighted. It's possible.
That's true.
So, maybe have a read, any student that has earned a 4.0 GPA on an unweighted scale, or the two highest GPAs earned?
Correct.
Academic school year will be recognized as valedictorian?
On the unweighted scale, yes, that would be correct.
That's a great point, because it's happened here before.
So, on option one, we have no salutatorian?
Yeah, that was just my question, so now you're raising the question about what to do for salutatorian, how you work that in there. We had, we had mentioned in open discussion the last time that possibility of 3.75 or some other GPAs were thrown around for salutatorian qualification.
Right.
So.
Why not the next highest grade point average?
Well, we might have five or six, so.
We might have five or six.
We might have five or six.
That's what I'm saying, we might have five or six vowels, so then do you just have one Sal? Or is it, if you have five valedictorian 4.0s and five 3.99s? I mean, I think we just have to sort of put that in text somehow to clarify that. Or do we not have salutatorian at all, because we have so many potential valedictorians?
Yeah, I kind of like what Danny said, was the next highest GPA, unweighted, below the 4.0, would be considered salutatorian, and that could be one or multiple, just like valedictorian could be in that aspect. Because it's very difficult to unweighted to get a unique advantage of only one point above someone else. Am I correct? Which could be 3.99, right, as you stated, but it could be several there. But that makes it, I mean, that's option one, that would be.
How would that read, I guess?
It would say something to the effect of, the salutatorian would be the next highest GPA, unweighted GPA below the 4.0.
Nobody else cares how many valedictorians or salutatorians that they have.
Yeah, quantity doesn't matter to me either, honestly.
The salutatorian will be the next highest unweighted GPA below a 4.0?
Or the student who earns the next highest GPA on the unweighted scale will be recognized as salutatorian?
Okay, so, salutatorian will be the next highest unweighted GPA below a 4.0, or? Could you repeat that again, Mrs. Mansfield?
I would just say, the student who earns the next highest GPA on an unweighted scale will be recognized as salutatorian.
And there could be multiples of those as well.
Yeah.
He said it, so by saying that the first way was broad, and then she brought it to, that also identifies it as a student?
Yeah, and it could be student parentheses S, right?
Yeah, so the student, the student, plural, asks who earns the next highest GPA on an unweighted scale will be recognized as salutatorian?
Yeah, does that work for everybody?
That's for me, but that's for you guys.
So, let me just ask one question, do other schools do it this way? Are we gonna get, you know, are we gonna be the only ones?
No, there's other schools that do it that way as well. They presented it at that last work session. I believe there's a, for example, in our area, Northmont, does it that way, I believe?
I mean, I don't know that they do salutatorian, I think is the stickler that I'd want to, the sticking point I have in my mind. I don't, I don't mind if we do, I just don't, I think usually when you have the multiple valedictorian situation, I don't know that you do salutatorian, so. But if we want to, I mean, we're our own, right?
Yeah, all the Miami County schools that I've seen at the dinner do that.
They have, they have five or six valedictorians, they also have salutatorian. There's, there's nothing wrong with recognizing as many students.
Absolutely.
Extremely well, as you want.
Absolutely.
Well, and what I'm excited about is this really does level the playing field, whether you take classes on campus, or as Danny said, in fine arts or business or CCP classes, because we are seeing, especially this year, a huge difference in the kids who have taken CCP off-campus versus those who have stayed on-campus. And I don't think that's what we want, we don't want to penalize the kids that stay on-campus.
That's right.
So, part of that option one was the class of 2021 and 2022, our grandfathered in using the system that they have been under since their freshman year, regardless of which option is chosen. Are we, do you think we're doing them an injustice by doing that? Besides putting them under the 4.0 and the next highest GPA is valedictorian, salutatorian? Since they're following a difficult rubrics now?
Is that what some of your family, I'm just asking, I guess, from the last meeting, when we had the students and several family members that were here, weren't they concerned about potentially changing on them midstream?
Yeah, I believe they were, but I think when we were discussing it, it was changing, it was a singular valedictorian, and that was gonna create, I think, the difference.
Okay.
Did I catch that correctly?
I believe so, and this legally, legally, I believe is a better solution, because we could not solely do what we had historically, correct?
Correct.
So, I think this is the best, the best of both worlds. I think the students learned a lot, they didn't realize all that other story. So, I, I think this, to me, is a level playing field wherever you are. I know it's unfortunate, we can't go back in time, but we can't.
So, is this suggestion just to make it for this school year on? Or do we wait till the 2022, 23 school year to enact it?
I think we want to go ahead and enact it this year. Am I missing something, Jacob?
On the form? Why would we wait? That's what I'm asking, and what he had asked for was 21 and 22 years stay on the current system they're on. And then he said, start something new in 2023, since they've been under that since their freshman year, versus just saying, no, we're gonna do it this way, starting for this senior class on the 4.0, right, or do we, that's what I'm getting at?
I would, I would want to know, I think, why Mr. Swob did that, if that was because we do still have some of those students who had maybe not paid as much care to their elective-type classes as they had their other classes. So now, when we go to unweighted strictly, they may be penalized. So I think he's trying to keep that in place for those students, to give them the option to still be under the old system. And so I would like to check with him, you know, and see if that was his thinking there, to not penalize those students who, you know, didn't consider unweighted as a consideration for valedictorian, now that we're changing gears.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's what he was thinking.
Yeah, and I don't think we want to change it for the junior class, that would be really, I mean, it's okay to have both, but I think that would be very disruptive. They've already set their plans.
Correct.
He's doing it because it's too late for them to recover.
Correct. I think it's very intentional on Mr. Swob's part to give them the option of both considerations, to be unweighted and under the old plan for 2021 and 2022.
Because historically, we haven't seen a lot of discrepancies, and I don't want to say discrepancies, a lot of movement in the GPAs between students until they hit their junior year, because that's really when you start taking all the College Credit Plus classes.
So, to, when, so to me, it looked, it appears that it would be, so the unweighted scale, seems like it would offer a better opportunity for the seniors, starting immediately, versus waiting the two years.
Well, they'll still have that, they'll still have that, though, Jacob, both systems will be in place for the next two years.
Well, I think you're right, Jacob. I mean, what you're asking, is it unfair to those that are using the weighted system, right? Because now they're gonna have some classmates potentially also be valedictorian that wouldn't have been. Right, is that your point?
No, no, I'm saying, right now, currently, there's one valedictorian and one salutatorian for the 2021 senior class, when there possibly could be four valedictorians for the 2021 class under this program.
We had four valedictorians, I think, two or three years ago, under a different system.
Okay.
And still recognize the salutatorian that year.
Right, yeah, no, but that's what I was getting at, was are we hurting the students by not doing it right away? That's, I mean, that's what I need to understand from, from Mr. Swob, because one of the things that we have to do is, is incorporate the off-campus weighted credits that they weren't anticipating in the 2021 or 2022 school year, legally. Which will create the disadvantage that they were concerned about, I thought.
If it helps, I can, I can ask him tomorrow morning, and then shoot out an email to you guys, letting you know his, I guess, background or train of thought, as far as why he created it the way he did with the class of 21 and 22.
You can.
And I think with our concerns about the legal issue things, I think that if, as long as we're giving both options to all the classes, I think we're probably okay. Even with the on-campus, off-campus thing, I think if we institute the new, and that's fine, and then we say, but if you're gonna be ruined by the new system, and you want to stick under the old system for the next two years, if you're 21 and 22, I feel like we're probably okay. I would, I would want to know that for sure, maybe from John, but I think we're okay there to say, we're not taking that away from you, and everybody's okay. So, that's my thinking.
I can call to him tomorrow, I'll ask.
Yeah, but in the plan, it says for the school years was, they'll stay under the current system now. The new system, that we were talking The new system that we were talking about with the four point oh doesn't start until, only for this incoming freshman class.
Well, but it says additionally, right? So to me, it's kinda giving them both, and so I just don't know if our wording there is not appropriate.
It clearly says that they remain under the system they were since their freshman year.
No, but the, he gave the second option then, Jacob. I think you're misreading what Mr. Swope intended. I agree with Lyda.
Yeah, cuz the twenty twenty three and beyond doesn't start until below.
No, so what we're, what you're saying is, they can either, if the old system gets them there and if the new system gets them there, then.
Right, right.
To cover everybody.
Right, the next two years, we may have even more vowels and salves, but.
Right, right.
Okay, that's good, no, no.
I think it's a great compromise in that it really does lump everybody in there for the next two years, no matter what system you're on, you should be cool. And then after that, it's unweighted GPA, four point oh, boom.
Alright, I'll just, uh, I'll, I'll send you guys our follow-up email tomorrow, just to confirm that's what he was thinking, it is intent in developing it.
Thank you.
I'm thinking it will be, and then I'll give you a thumbs up.
Thank you.
So one, one last point of clarification, the, the class of twenty twenty one and twenty two would include a salutatorian, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we added.
Under the same rules.
We're gonna add language that said, says the student parentheses ask who earns the next highest GPA on an unweighted scale will be recognized as salutatorian.
No, I'm talking about the rule on the twenty one and twenty two class, it's where it says they would use the system that they had in, since their freshman year. That's for both Val and Sal, right?
Yes, right, and, and we add, and that Justin took the note to add the salutatorian requirements under the additional, the new one.
Right.
They'll still have the salutatorian, uh, requirements in the old system as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that, it just needs to go in both places.
And then, and then under the twenty twenty three and beyond.
It needs, it needs to go on option one and two?
No, uh, twenty one, twenty two, but twenty three and beyond, yeah, you have it.
Okay, good, alright.
Yeah, we'll get it fully clarified, and that was his, and confirmed that was his intent. My apologies, I did not catch the additionally, I, I was thinking, okay, additionally, this is what happens to these two grades, and this is what happens to everybody else, and I was like, why would we disadvantage the students if there's an opportunity for them to do it, so.
And we're just gonna, I just wanna make sure, we're just gonna implement option one, correct?
Well, that, that's the one that looked to be the, from based on what I heard from the students, um, that seemed to be the um, the most advantageous program for us to have, and incorporating more than just, um, it allows us to include the arts, it allows us to include, uh, skills and tradecraft as well.
Yes.
A craftsmanship, sorry.
Yes, so can we, we vote on this for handbook amendment or whatever next week?
Uh, the plan, the plan would be to have it on the agenda for your guys' consideration.
Awesome.
And Justin, I just want, one last thing, you're gonna put the two highest GPAs on the unweighted scale will be recognized, or however that wording needs to be?
Uh, I can, I can, I can have it however you guys wanted. It currently reads, any student that has earned a four point oh GPA on an unweighted scale will be recognized as valutatorian. Should it be any student comma or parentheses S, students?
That wasn't my concern. My concern was if some year we don't have a student with a four point oh, that language needs to somehow be incorporated.
Oh, that's right, we talked about.
Right.
Earns a four point oh GPA or the highest unweighted GPA for that class.
Yes. Thank you.
So any student that earns a four point oh GPA or the highest unweighted GPA, uh, will be recognized as valedictorian. Does that sound okay?
Yes, and probably we would have to tweak then what we said, right, cuz it said any student, the highest unweighted GPA below a four point oh is the valedictorian, so figure out a, an out there.
Okay.
For a salutatorian, it would be, or the next highest G, lowest GPA from the valedictorian.
The next highest unweighted.
GPA.
The next highest GPA on an unweighted scale will be recognized.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, that covers it.
That one's good.
Case is not four point oh, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you for your input, appreciate it.
Excellent. I think we made some great progress. I know it's, we've held it up quite a bit, and we've been back and forth, but I think we're gonna come out with a, uh, with a great, uh, a great product that's gonna, uh, celebrate the academic excellence of, of our students.
One last question, if I can. I know that prior to this, we didn't have anything in there about the um, in the handbook itself, I think, do we have anything in there about the credits for the middle schoolers earning um, college credit plus? It's a whole separate issue to that, I think, I know that, and I understand that, that this may not be appropriate for right now. But I don't know that we ever addressed that being in the handbook for that credit being earned for high school credit, so at some point, we have to get that in there somewhere.
He addressed it, and it's even in option two, it discusses it, um, but, um, that'll be all captured, cuz we got to capture the the total GPA, is that correct, with the weighted scores and everything for their, um, transcripts, and um, he had discussed any CCP additions for seventh and eighth grade will be factored, um, with the weighted GPA add-on a point zero two five.
Yeah, I mean, I know, we're not doing that now, so I just wanna make sure that whatever our handbooks say elsewhere about the college credit plus students in middle school getting their high school credit, that's, but it's a totally separate kind of an issue, so that might be a different discussion.
I'll do that in the conversation with him tomorrow, and you can expect a follow-up email to do that also.
Awesome, thank you very much, Mr. Fercs.
You're welcome.
And just to clarify, I believe college credit plus classes off-campus get point five weight. That was, I think, an error in the option two, so just be careful that they take a whole class in a semester at college. So it's, Beth will give them point two five each semester, but if you take the class as a college class, you take the whole thing as a semester. So that wording is a little inaccurate.
Yeah, he clarified that as well. They get point two five per graded semester, so they get two grades for that CCP class. Point two five and point two five, is how he explained it.
Oh.
Seriously.
I.
We break it out in, um, the program. And how they do the GPA.
Yeah, Lori, I was always a little shaky on that understanding in there as well, cuz I agree with you, you're taking a whole class in one semester, so I was like, hmm, seemed weird to me too, so I'm with you.
Cuz remember I brought that up in the current plan, that if I take it in the first half, that's when the valedictorians pick that they'll have point two five more than the other one, and they said that they don't count it, they count just the point two five.
Right, and I, again, I've still never fully understood that, cuz I feel like you're doing the whole year's work in one semester, so a- again, I just don't understand it, and I, I understand that's the policy, and I get that, but I don't understand why that's the policy, so that's a whole other issue completely, so.
We're wiping that out, so it's not gonna be.
Right, exactly, so.
So, that'll just be what they'll get in the end of the school year.
Right.
One other thing we may wanna specify, if it's not specified, is when we will establish valedictorian, or when the, when, when the high school principal will announce that, because I know we, I think right now it's after third quarter, which is fine, I'm not suggesting we change that, but I'm not sure it's written in policy anywhere.
Yeah, it says we'll do it at the, eh, end of the first semester, senior year.
Does it say that in this policy?
Uh, in the full policy, I think he just kinda gave us the quick fixes to all the language we had in there.
Okay.
So it won't include the last semester then? The calculation of the four point oh unweighted?
Yep, so, so say your question again, sorry, Julie?
So it will not include the very last semester?
Um, the way our policy currently reads is it's determined after the first semester. So that, that, Mr. Swope is, Mr. Swope, uh, Mr. Fercs is taking a note, um, to ask, uh, Mr. Swope with regards to how is he gonna identify that now that we're on this?
I'll, I'll do that in response as well.
I, I thought that last time they said that would be pretty easy to change that to include the entire year, just based on when, wh- why are you shaking your head no, Lori?
Because all the awards and everything are before they graduate, so if you don't determine your valedictorian till the end of May, they're gonna miss out on any of those awards. Like, there's a county dinner and all of that. I, I think they need to be announced. I, I would be fine waiting till third quarter, but I, you know, I don't know. I, I would not recommend waiting till the very end, I wouldn't.
Correct, so we just need to identify what that is, if it's. Um.
Whether it's the second or the third quarter.
Whether it's the end of the second quarter or the end of the third quarter, we just need to identify it so we can move forward. And I believe it's on a projected scale based on past school history of, if they're close, then they may be named or added or removed, uh, prior to giving out the honors. So more to come, and I think as, as he says, that we go, we kinda, excuse me. Uh, option one seems to be the best fit for our students in our community, um, so if Mr. Swope is able to incorporate that into the full plan policy, um, and identifying the areas that we discussed, um, that'd be great to have in, for us on the next board meeting. Any other items of concern that needs to be addressed in that? Alright. Um, can we just skip down to land debt so that, uh, Mr. King, uh, Patrick King can, no relation to me, but uh, Mr. King can, uh, discuss his portion?
And, uh, I just got, uh, Ms. Jennifer Blazer as well just joined us, so, uh, she's getting ready to connect, so. How's it going, Patrick?
Hey, everybody, thanks for having me. Thanks for moving me up too, I think. I was, you know, this is very confusing, I was half paying attention, but I heard Mr. King, you know, however many times, and so I would always perk up. It was hard to, uh, focus on this, yeah.
So I've been working with, uh, Patrick and Jennifer, uh, one of the things we have to decide as a district is, uh, the current land debt, um, there's two, basically two options, uh, one is to pay the remaining off, obviously that, there's a early payoff amount. Or the second one, uh, according with working with Patrick from Build America Mutual, is they would be willing to show an interest in our current facility, most likely the high school, until the debt was paid off in, uh, twenty thirty two. So, um, I sent the information to the board, um, if we pay it off, we currently owe five hundred eighty six thousand dollars in principal. Uh, the payoff, tell me as of when it was asked, I don't know if it's changed any or not, but it's a hundred thirty six thousand dollars. Uh, we currently owe, with interest and admin fees, seven hundred eighty nine thousand eight hundred thirty one dollars. So if we would pay it off, current value, time of value money, we would roughly save about sixty eight thousand dollars. Also, keep in mind, that will also free up about sixty five thousand dollars of the district's PI money. Um, I know one of the things that we're trying to do is update our fleet and buses, so that could be where we can reallocate those towards, even if we paid it off, we would still, as of the payoff amount, still have one point seven two five million dollars in the capital projects fund, which with talking to Patrick, getting how we do our amortization schedule, would still be enough to cover the first, uh, principal payment due for the certificate of participation. Um, so it's really what the board feels like is the best direction for the district. Um, I know it's a lot of money, but to me, I think it's one less thing we have to worry about in, uh, with this project, and I, as I said earlier, still pay it off. Um, I know the payoff amount is not a hot, uh, positive thing for a couple more members, but if you look at it overall, we're still saving money, if you look at interest and administration fees, we're still saving about sixty eight thousand dollars. And then that also frees up sixty five thousand dollars a year for the next twelve years of your PI money, which accumulates seven hundred twenty thousand. But we kinda need to know what the board wants to do in order to write the resolution for the board to approve the, the issue of the certificate of participation.
Brennan, with all that's gonna be happening with the construction and everything else, I, I will fully support your recommendation to pay it off. I think it makes sense financially to do this now, it just cleans everything up.
So this is Julie, I'm, I'm all for saving money, as you know, and of course, saving that interest would, would be great. But the last time we talked about this, the main reason we did not, we did not vote to pay, or one of the reasons, um, I went back and looked at some notes was because you had recommended that we might need it, um, at that time, it was for potentially getting a metal structure or swing space or something, so we know we don't need that at the moment, but, but what about other things? Or is there, you know, what if things go haywire with the build and we need some funding? So that, that's one question, not saying, you know, do it because of that or not do it. The other question was, you had sent us that email, Brennan, about that we had to pay off the land before we could, we could borrow, you know, borrow against the TUF, so where does that stand? Is that still true?
This is Jennifer Blazer, um, I can address that if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, when we originally did this, um, because this is a lease interest financing, um, and, and Patrick can jump in here too, but a lot of times, depending where the rating is, um, you're looking to get insurance. Um, and the reason you get insurance is it gives you a better rating, which gives you a better interest rate. And so to get insurance, it would actually save, um, the district money versus not getting in, insurance. Um, but the insurer, because they have an interest in this land, um, that's their security. Um, there were two ways we could do this, one, you needed to pay off the existing OASV lease, um, so that that lien on the land is gone, or after talking with Bam, and Patrick had a conversation with Bam, and this is where he can jump in. They basically said, um, if the decision is not to go ahead and pay off that lease, um, then Bam would take an interest in the high school until that OASV lease was paid off.
And, and, and the benefit, just to, to make sure everyone's a hundred percent clear on this, um, Bam or Build America Mutual, uh, is a bond insurance company whose participation and, uh, whose policy, uh, insurance policy gives the district a higher rating and lower interest cost, which would, uh, be a significant benefit on the twenty eight million dollar COPS transaction. So we are, uh, very interested in having them participate. Um, the savings associated with their, uh, participation is, uh, much greater or, or, you know, a significant amount, I, I, I'm gonna hesitate to put a number on it, but it's a, it's a very worthwhile amount to, to have them involved, um, hence this little problem that has bubbled up.
So Patrick, just to clarify, um, if we pay it off, we're saving a sixty seven thousand dollars and probably total cost of life. What, which Brennan, uh, no, rough estimate there. Second would be, um, that we could get a better interest rate on the loan that we're getting uh, for the new school building, and that we could see a significant amount of savings based on that lower percentage rate?
Let me put this, let me put it a little, a second.
Sorry to hear you. No. It's like you got some interference. I'm shaking my head.
You're really staticky, Patrick, I don't know what changed.
A second, I'm sorry. Is this any better?
Yes.
All right. I don't know what I did, but. I, I, I want to, so when we sell the cops, we have assumed there will be bond insurance on the transaction. In order to have bond insurance on the transaction, there are two paths that we can go down. One is. The payoff of the, of the OASBO pool financing for the land that Brennan talked about. And the other path is having the lease, their lease interest in. The high school extend not just through construction, but through the life of the OASBO financing, which I think is. 2031. So the way we look at it, it's in your best interest. To have bond insurance on this transaction. It's which way you want to. Which security interest you would like to give them in this process. And Jennifer, jump in here and make sure I'm.
No, I agree. And I, and I think kind of, you know, just as a little background, you know, what we're saying is, you know, for, for the insurer Bam. Unlike a typical voted bond issue where the security the bondholders have is that. You have a specific tax that you're taxing the taxpayers to pay it off. When you do these. COPS or certificates of participation financing, you don't have that voted tax stream. What you have. Or the security for the cop holders or the insurers, which would be Bam in this case. Is they have an interest in your facility. That's their security. So the reason that we're having this conversation, like Patrick said, is we think economically, it makes sense to have this insurance. But Bam has to look at it from, okay, so this is my security. If there's already a lease on the land. We would have, you know, a secondary interest in it. That's not enough security for them. So they've said, you know. Hey, you either need to go ahead and pay off the OASBO lease. Or if you decide not to pay off the OASBO lease, in order for us to feel more secure, then we're going to need to have an interest in the high school. Until that OASBO lease is paid off. And I don't know if that gives a little bit of background history and it kind of makes it easier to understand. Why we're looking at one of these two options in order to go forward with insurance.
Okay, so, so that makes sense to me, but sorry, can you guys just read the numbers again? Cause I heard different numbers. So what, what do we owe? What, what will pay off the?
She asked if you could read off those numbers again, Brennan, for the land.
We have 586,000 and the payoff as of when we asked about it was 136.
What, what was that? I couldn't hear that last number.
136 in penalty.
So the total payoff amount would be 722, 000. And we currently owe with interest and admin fees, $789,831.
Seven eighty-nine, what was the rest of it?
Eight thirty-one.
Eight thirty-one. Okay, and you said it would save us. I'm sorry, I thought Jacob said a different number, but I can't hear too well. Is it 58,000 or 67,000?
Sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Six eight.
Okay. And that's the savings in interest.
And then you would free up $65,000 a year in your PI fund as well.
Okay. And, and the money that we currently keep to pay this. What, what kind of interest are we losing on that? Like, are we going to be ahead with the 65K being freed up?
Well, if you take 65 times, let's see, it'd be 12 years. That's $780,000 that you free up for the next 12 years with the I. That's basically what you, so you free up $789,000 in your PI fund for the next 12 years.
And Brendan, your opinion is we have sufficient funds in that new construction fund without in any way overextending ourselves, correct?
Correct. The only thing you would have to consider is if there's any unknown LFI that we have not come across. And I'm not aware of anything. The only thing would be is where the board decides to put the elementary building. I think Mark and Mike. Mark and Mike sent you guys, if it's in the one location, about $240,000 related to the hookup. It's the other location at $60,000. That would be one thing to consider about. Any other things, you know, I'm sure they got through a ground test and all that. But as far as the principal side, we were still, I've worked with Patrick to tighten up right to have the. Principal payments at the beginning of the issuance, meet with what we're going to be getting till near the end.
All right.
Hey, Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong. So basically the decision for the board is, do they want to give the bond? Insurer interest in $21 million because of the high school building? Or the cost of the land that they purchased? Is that really the ultimate decision?
I, I, yeah, I mean, you, I think the second part of that is, and you have to write a $750,000 check or something. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, right. Do you want, do you want to give them an interest in a. Building for 11 years that, that they would otherwise have no. Interest in and, and no connection to, or write the check and be done with it. So.
Sorry. Them having an interest in the building, that doesn't cost us anything.
No.
Correct. And then the other question was, I, I'm sorry again, but I thought I heard Jacob say that we would get a better interest rate. Now that.
That was the question I was asking.
Okay, so, so I ask it again then, because I didn't hear the answer.
The, the interest rate, regardless of which one of these two choices you select, will be the same.
Okay.
If you decide to give them the interest in the building or pay off the loan. The, the net effect. On the cops themselves when they are sold is zero, because in both instances, they will have. A municipal bond insurance policy from Build America Mutual on it. So.
Got it. Okay. Does the board feel like this should be on the next? Board meeting for a vote? Let's see, two yeses, three, that's enough. So do you add?
Well, do you want to approve the resolution or do you want to approve which one? Because in order, I need to know because you can't prove the resolution until I know. Cause I got, Jennifer's got to write the resolution depending on how we're going to do it.
Oh, I figured we would put on the agenda for next meeting is to pay off the land.
To pay it off. Okay.
Is that, is that also your recommendation?
That, that, that would be mine. Yeah, and yeah. Okay.
Is that Brennan speaking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Patrick, for all the work you've been doing with our school to help us. Advance the educational opportunities for all, for our entire community as we grow.
Thank you. Always a good discussion in Buffalo. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks, Patrick. Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, so we'll roll back to I, letter B supplemental contracts. I know we went back and forth even in the last meeting, talking about asking MOU in regards to those.
Yes. Did I, did I email?
You emailed this out? Can you be able to reference your email?
Yeah, just kind of got it from God. Yeah, the second part. So were you able to reference email in regards to the two LOUs that I sent out?
Yes.
Okay, so the two were, the first one was from BEA. And the second one was one that John sent to me as a sample. Mrs. Brewer is also here. I provided her a, a hand copy as well to take a, take a look at, but. I think some of the biggest. Differences between them is. Obviously, the one that the attorney sent was a little bit shorter, didn't have as much language or wording in it, which is, either one's fine. The, the one that John had sent would be. Pertaining to all activities for the rest of the year. And I think that was one of. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the things that the board had talked about of trying to figure out what we're going to do for winter and spring. Not only co-curricular, but also extracurricular. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense, Tracy. So the one that BEA said kind of dealt with the 13 that were first brought to our attention. Hopefully Tracy feels like we'll take it the next step and we're going to include everybody into this equation, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I know Tracy hasn't had much time to take a look at it, but is there anything in there that stuck out as far as concerns from the one that John sent?
No.
There, there's several, I think, and they kind of mirrors somewhat in the payment of, as they start for a quarter. As they, as they do things, because one of the things we wanted to, I think as the board, one, have this in place so that we could. Initiate all the supplementals, so everybody knows which ones. And then the guidelines for. If it would go, if it wouldn't go for payment, if, if depending on, you know, only. I, I, you know, we're, we all hope knock on wood right this year only based on the, the pandemic that we're dealing with.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
So then, just the board members have some objection, and the idea would be to handle it with this MOU for the remainder of the school year. With all code and extracurricular supplementals. And you can see how it's laid out as far as A, B, and C. Excuse me, A, B, C, and D mostly pertaining to athletics, but section two. Also includes other supplemental activities, which would be your co-curriculars. That would be paid out in the same fashion as listed above.
So that was the third, nine was the fourth.
Why is the third? Why was it just, you just, I don't pull that out in air, maybe? I don't know. I think he took other samples for what he's helped other districts write. So the problem you get into is what happens, Brennan, if you start the season and then you shut it down. Well, he has a year, so they've already earned the third. They've already earned two thirds because the first game is played. Yeah. The only, I, I like how it's written. The only thing, I don't know if we could put in here is. I don't want to have to do a third, a third, a third. I'd be okay if I could do half and half. It's just the more times I got them. Because those supplementals are intended to be paid once a year. And so if we could compromise on. If I could do half and half, either an equals divider, I'm okay with that. It's just. I would, if we could do like for football, I mean, for all the sports, if we could do. And rather than do half, if, if the first game is played, pay half. And then if the second, if the first game of the second half of the season is played, you pay it all to move on. I mean, that's my thing. I'm okay either way. I just want something where I only have to do it twice enough. A third to third, because a third divider, you're going to get odd sets.
So do, how you do the supplements now? So I think that's what he's saying is, no matter what it is, you pay that at the end of the season, right? So you would pay, this, that's just how much of it they earned, facing that spot. Not to get to paying three times. It's just, you pay, still pay the one time. It's just what level they get. They just, he just broke it into thirds.
But it says shall be paid, so when I see shall be paid in third portions, I'm.
Oh, I just figured it was that they'll shall be paid for that normally how we would pay it. At the end of the season.
So the second one has shall be paid. How about if you pay, will earn, like how he has the coach, the coaches won? I mean.
I got it now.
I mean, I don't think it should change when we pay it. I think it's just when they earn. Cause they burned, they, they burned it already. And like, I mean, I'm up for any, I mean, I'm, I get it. This is better written. Our, makes more sense to me, but. I just, I don't, I don't know if we will, I mean, I get the earning. I guess if it's just earned and then we just track it. And then we pay it if. Then we get shut down halfway through the year, we just, then we'll just pay it running at that time. We won't wait till the end of the year. Not going to hold it out till the end of the year.
Yeah, so you're doing the third, not the fourth.
If you're okay, I mean, the earned, earned. I could do, yeah, I, I can, I could do the third. It's just, it might be an offset. Cause only in the, as long as the members know that, you know, for two thirds of. You're going to get an offset, it's not going to be around number. I don't, I mean, why would they, why would they, I guess. So because just how the supplemental is and they're driven by performing the whole thing, so. If they fight, because we've already done contracts. So, and we're getting ready to suffer fall scores, and if they sign it. And they, that way, play the season, you know, gets postponed and they only did half the season. They're only going to get two thirds, nothing for them now. Did you have any major issues with it, Tracy?
No.
Yeah, I think as you guys finalize and that, fine tune that, and you guys have that all done, then if you're able to do the supplementals. And, and this MOU together, we could do that at the next board meeting that we can move forward to the 14th.
Jacob, can you or Justin and Brennan clarify what we're doing with those 13 supplementals? Are the activities going to be the same way? I, I wasn't very clear on that. You may have said it, but I couldn't hear all of the discussion.
Yeah, if you look at section two indicates that the person who's employed for all other activity supplemental, so that would be your co-curricular. And other extracurriculars will be paid, shall be paid in the one-third portions, similar to your extracurricular.
So, so the suggestion is to follow the one that Mr. Poberski wrote. Is that what I'm hearing?
The, the biggest difference between the two was a fourth versus a third. Is that correct, Tracy? And then just the second section should say shall earn and one third just. So it's the same, shall be paid, shall earn? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so Tracy, her proposal for the MOU was for the 13 versus ours would be for the entire year. That's the difference between the two. Would it be in the building principal is the deciding on the section two and in the section one is the AD? So we delineated who'd go to determine it?
Reading my mind, Mr. King, that was exactly my next question.
I could tell.
And, and I like that, actually. I like that we're giving our building principals the authority to decide whether these move forward and, and taking that off of Mr. Fark's plate. And putting it where it's appropriate, so.
Okay.
Any other concerns that pop up, Tracy, with language at all?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'll make a couple of those changes and I'll send it to you so you have a copy of it. And then we'll plan on having on the agenda for the 14th unless I hear differently from.
And then just from my calculation, right, the, the people that just need to sign this is between you and Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, after.
After you guys agree?
Yeah, but it'll still be approved by the school board. You would approve the MOU, but then two would just.
Got it. I didn't know we needed to approve it or not. That's okay. Yeah. Okay. So, yeah. So, yeah, so it'd be that, then anything else. Got it.
And, and just to clarify, this will apply for already approved contracts as well, like, like, let's say. Something strange would happen and we get to November and have to shut down. Obviously, the fall sports would be completely paid and winter sports would be whatever. They either just get preseason if games hadn't started.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so I couldn't hear all of that. So i- is this going to be a permanent MOU or is it going to expire? Just, is it just for the one year?
It's, this is just for the one year for, due to COVID.
Okay.
That's our only concern, because normally we wouldn't be worried about it shutting down, to continue on through the school year.
Well, I think we can expect more pandemics in the future, but aside from that. So that, will the 13 be called out individually or we're going with the more, more general wording?
So we're going with the general so that we can approve all the supplementals in one time?
Okay. And you're just going to clarify in the general, who makes the decision on what level?
Correct. It's already in the MOU that the. Correct, it's already in the MOU that the the principal, the building principal does the uh all the other co-curricular events and the athletic director determines the sporting ones.
It's already in which MOU?
This, the one that Justin sent from Mr. Poberski.
Okay.
It's under option two on page two.
Yeah, I didn't see where
Section two, sorry.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Well, the the coach has been
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. I I didn't see it at first, that's why I was glancing at it and then I was like, okay, building principal is the activity.
And Brennan, you may want to adjust the language there to will earn.
Yeah, he brought that up.
Yeah.
Is that the, is that the spot? I'm sorry, didn't have this.
Section two, yep.
Tracy, you have a comment?
It's just also one year because it's a negotiation year as well.
Oh yeah. So if there's something like this that um, you know, the BEA feels like we should administer first for future events. Maybe a little section in the contract for uh unforeseen pandemics. That we have a little section in there talks about it, then we don't have to do this again, so for the next hundred years, uh twenty years from now, I'd be like, why did they write that in the contract? Alright, so.
Well, and it's not just pandemics, right? There could be another nine eleven sort of thing, like especially since we live near Wright-Patt. You know, you, I mean, there's just all kinds of unforeseen things now.
Good points. Okay. Any other questions and move on? Alright, naming rights. On here we had naming rights of the stadium. Um I put together reviewing multiple uh different naming rights uh policies all over um from around the United States, I think is what I said in the, in the email, and I kind of consolidated into what I thought would parameters that would work best for us, so to include uh sponsorship um naming rights as well as honorary naming rights um uh in in that, in that policy. For for uh, you know, in any reason that we felt was appropriate or that a community member would. Um the biggest piece that that I was kind of going back and forth on was um the submission requirements, the nomination form or you know, the request for, to to have that conversation to negotiate uh if it was for sponsorship. Um in the document, and then I sent you a second one, that was the, another school's guide I thought was really uh detailed and it offered up uh a lot of information uh out there um with regards to different areas of the school that that could be done. Um I looked at another, another school in Ohio, um they did a honorary and sponsorship for um they just had it on a spreadsheet. And just tracked it that way, what was available for how long uh each one was. Um and had went through and and assessed the value um to that, to that um naming right. So whether it was honorary or um sponsorship wise. Um and I kind of liked that the, you know, I put that Mr., the superintendent and the treasurer would evaluate if it's an honorary the, whether it's a um items delivered to the school um in lieu of services or in lieu of, you know, performance um by a significant member in the school or the community. And they could adjust what they felt like that was, or at least consult with a a professional to do that. That's kind of what I had in there.
Did it also include like forming uh some sort of like a committee?
It did, it said that you're uh at your um discretion, you could establish a committee. Um a couple of the ones out there too is kind of unique as it was if uh if you wanted it to do honorarium that you could present it with three paragraphs of why, all their information and and have a uh signed petition with at least fifty members from the school district uh that um agreed with you. So we still gotta kind of work through some of those pieces, so I was just trying to get the main framework, but I think we ha- we still have to kind of look, look at the school and the outside grounds, so not just facility but space. Um to determine what value we want to place for honorary or sponsorship for those spaces. Um I think as well, I started the first part of the document that I thought was very true and that was ensuring that we have a balance um, you know, with the educational needs of our students and the environment they're in versus commercialization of the space. So I think this is a great opportunity for us, not just to be thinking about a new building or a new stadium or new baseball softball fields, but um that it listed out, you know, you, we could do concession stands, we could do locker rooms, you can do hallways, libraries.
Computer room.
Computer rooms. Auditoriums, I mean, you can probably do, you know, all those key spaces. Um and it talked about using signage as well that helps drive people to that area. Um and I think that it would give us a greater opportunity to recognize um teachers, staff, they were community members and even students um in, under the honorarium uh portion of that, um that can be nominated uh for for those areas to have, you know, to name that after them. So. Or and or sponsorship to purchase it, you know.
I thought it was interesting in the, in the latter part of it, that it gave, like you said, it gave a value to all these and then it had a time limit. So I assume that that was a commercialization as opposed to an honorary.
Right. I think, and also I think our key piece of this is that I think that's stay true to the, our district um naming. Um that uh continuing with the names of Bethel Elementary, Bethel Middle School and Bethel High School is of um significant importance to our district. Versus um I use a very uh, you know Billy Joe Bob's High School, Bethel Local Schools, Billy Joe Bob's High School. Um, you know, I don't know if that fits in line with um what we want or the naming, you know, just to keep everything consistent and I think having those pieces utilized for uh auditoriums, libraries, other places is more appropriate than than the building, so that's why I I listed a a true higher value in there for those. That's where it was fifty percent the cost of the building or seventy-five percent the cost of the renovation for the facility to have the name on, but you know, that was just my first stab at that and that we can adjust all those down to something completely different. But I think it's um, I think one of the things if we could get maybe a list of of spaces that that are, that could possibly done so that we could identify those.
We could definitely most certainly put a list together, but like I think as you indicated earlier that list could be, I mean, it could be as extensive as you want it to be, I mean, if you want to get down into naming hallways or a press box or a concession stand or an auditorium, and you could do a lot.
Yeah.
Do a lot of things, I mean, you could even get to the point where you name the stadium, but it also have a name of the field, so it'd be like you know, Bethel Stadium at yada, yada, yada field, cause somebody wanted to buy the naming rights of it.
Yeah.
It depends on how, how detailed you want to be.
Yeah, I saw in there where they had people do the stadium and then somebody else spun uh was named for the track.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even though it's in the same spot.
Yeah, or the artificial turf.
Or the turf.
So there was, there was a school up north in the Lyme area that, Alida High School, they had the, you know, Alida Fieldhouse, but then one of the banks of Alida actually had the naming rights of the floor. They'd always say Alida Fieldhouse at, you know, First National Bank floor. They left the naming rights of it, kind of like Coach K's board. So it just depends on how, how detailed you want to get with it, but that list could be as extensive or limited as you want it to be.
You know, I kind of wonder uh if there's uh a, a company out there that kind of does this?
Uh the the company that your current athletic director used to work with for side effects, which is who we got our scoreboard from on the football stadium. That's what they do, they go out and get the sponsorships and advertise them, he has all the knowledge and experience, I've worked for them for five years.
I I was looking at like in the, in the plan, right, so we'd have to identify what does the, what does the sign look like, what is, what is, how do we display it? I know one of the plans I reviewed was uh in, in the classrooms, it was this uh plaque that was four by six, these types of lettering. The hallways have a plaque with letters, you know, six inches by this big. Just, you know, if if somebody's doing it, you want to know what it is so that we don't, uh you know, a consultant that knows all those little pieces to kind of tie our entire program together, cause one of them offered like, you know, if you sponsor, if you became the sponsorship name for the new stadium, um what did that mean? And you got four seats, you know, every, you have four tickets to every athletic event, you know, for as long as your naming rights are on the stadium. And so you'll, what are those package deals, you know, kind of in that aspect? I mean, we could sit here and kind of go through it ourselves, but I I, we may do ourselves uh a disservice from capitalizing on that capability.
I'll I'll get with them and see what, who's out there that kind of does this kind of thing, come to us and see if they can come in and maybe do a presentation for you guys. To show you what they have to offer a charge programming.
Just want to know, naming rights related to buildings that are currently or done through non or taxable or taxable bond, there's a pressure that you can charge.
Okay.
And last time I checked, it was like five.
Excellent.
So we were gonna go down, but I would have to make sure.
Uh excuse me, I I can't hear what any of you guys are saying.
So
I'm saying if for the high school building, the future elementary building and the athletic facility there's percentage that you can only do for naming rights because it's related to taxable issued debt. And it's five percent of the present value, so if the board would want to go down that way before you accept anything, you would have to run it by your bond council to make sure it's legal.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was looking at was somebody to say, okay, what is, I don't, I don't know what the, you know, to name the, the locker, you know, the locker room for, that we're gonna have for on the basketball team. What, what is, what does that value say and what, what does that mean to the sponsor, so? Or an honorarium, you know, what does that mean to the family of that member? And just somebody to kind of peel back all those little, the, more like the guidebook, right, the extra that goes with it, I tried to outline like the policy and then the guidebook and the one that I, the first one I sent it. Um and then somebody kind of lay out what is our strat, you know, the marketing strategy with regards to how, what does that look like, where is it, what do we do? And balance it against what is the higher revised code, what are we allowed to do in those pieces? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, and I thought the school district you forwarded had some, I really liked the format, it was very clear, easy to understand. Um, you know, the amounts we can quibble over later, but um it, I I liked how it had academic, arts, athletics and then other, so they were trying to be as inclusive as possible.
So that's, sorry Lori, I I like the format too of that one. Or the amounts for the entire agreement though, or per year for that agreement?
I think it was set up like if it was a thirty year, that was the full amount I would, I would expect.
They had some in there where it's like if, if you were doing it for thirty thousand dollars for three years, you had to pay so much for each of those, you know, ten thousand a year at a minimum till you got to your thirty thousand, and things like that.
Okay, gotcha. So one, one thing I would just be worried about is having too many things have naming rights. Because you're gonna lose the effectiveness if everything has a name on it. You know, are less people gonna want to, want to do it then?
Right, well, and so remembering the plan too was um one for the sponsorship aspect for the, for the cost, the other one was the honorarium.
Right.
Which is at no cost. So looking at other opportunities um that we can memorialize and or uh show our value in continued success um from one of our uh teachers, staff or administrators um for the school.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about those, I was talking about if every classroom and every you know, every locker room, every seat has a name on it.
Right, yeah, I know, one of them was even, you could buy your, you could have your seats with your name on them for so long. If the, if the basketball stadium, gym and stuff like that.
We've talked about that with the, the potential new uh stadium is an option. Once we get into design and you guys have obviously input as well, you know, typically they have your regular traditional bleachers. But maybe putting a seat back section where you have like a season ticket holder type thing and that could be an opportunity for somebody to buy their seat. Have their nameplate on the back of it. Our old bleachers in the football stadium had, on the seats had people, people's names imprinted in the seats. Okay, so we've done it. Okay, so it's been done here before as well.
Yeah.
When was that Danny?
On the old football, I don't think it's this current uh bleachers, but the set before these, these bleachers had people who, who would gave money or bought seats and then they imprinted their names in the bleachers, in the bleacher seat, right in front of, right in front of the press box. Not the bleachers now, but the ones before then.
So I think in this plan would allow for, you know, incorporate all those little pieces in there so that we already have it set, everybody knows the expectation. Um if that's what they so choose, so we kind of got a foundation going, but it really opened my eyes up to the fact that it's not, it's not simple. Um I think we have to deliver it and understand the full package of each one of the items. And and I would assume there's got to be a consultant out there that does this. Um maybe even Springboro, I was, when I was doing a research, you know, Springboro just did a uh naming rights for their field, uh for their um stadium, I guess, or their field, I'm not sure. Um but
I can reach out to their superintendent.
Yeah.
See if I can get information on them.
Yeah, I don't know if they have one or how they did it, but you know, some of them offered up, you know, you can, for commercializing, you could offer up, you know, the corners of the football field. You know, that you can buy two to four, one to four spaces on the corners uh with your logos on it and things like that. Um and and the reason why to do this is one, one, we've been asked about it, you know, for naming rights capability, we don't have a policy truly for it um for the school already. Um but number two is that um these could assist with LFIs, you could just, you know, so there's more tangible benefit um to the community member that have something for them and also I think the other end of this is the ability um to recognize outstanding teachers, staff, students and and community members.
Lori, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest besides calling the schools or place in Springboro, I would also suggest you talk to Holly Mutlu cause she may have some contacts or know of people who do this as well.
Okay.
Yeah, very true.
And then I was just gonna say, I I'm assuming that our thought on this is it's gonna be sort of a rolled out um phased living document kind of a concept that is this something we're gonna do for, maybe we start with our high school since it's relatively new? And then our stadium and then our new K five building, is it, is it something like that? Are we looking at all of our existing things now? What are we thinking for that?
I I was thinking that we would establish the policy and and then everything would be in play, current or future. Since this, that's, since we're building so much now and in the future, I think this will uh, as people look to the new, the next facility that's built past the elementary, you know, and then this will allow us to refine those based on uh demand needs uh from those aspects.
So Jacob, you see this, whatever we adopt as a framework and maybe in a couple years we see how it goes, we may make modifications, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Expecting more to come.
Yeah, expect more to come, more, more opportunities um for that. And and honestly, and it's, and it's truly focusing on uh assisting us with the And, and honestly, and it's, and it's truly focusing on uh, assisting us with the school growth, cause he, it, the sponsorship ones would be directly related to and advancing the educational and extracurricular opportunities for our students. Um, or advancing equipment and facilities in, any one of those locally funded initiatives. Um, all those aspects that would, that could greatly assist us. And specifically, even if we have corporate sponsors um, that are assisting in, in those aspects.
What do you do if you have two, two or more companies wanting the same sponsorship? Is there a bidding process or?
I mean, that'd be something that we'd have to, during the uh, development of whatever guidebook or plan that the district that comes up with, those would be the discussions and questions with either ourselves or that consulting firm, whoever, you know, helps us put that together. They'll probably be able to provide some options for you, then you guys would decide what you feel fits best for Bepel, I would think. My opinion, that'd be a good problem to have.
Oh yeah, I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying we need to specify though, right? Because we don't, somebody will say, I was the first one there, it's me.
It's a very good question. Am I, am I end up being like a bid process where it's the time received? If it's the exact same amount, or maybe they're willing to, I don't know.
It, it allows the superintendent or any of our administrators to engage in negotiation practices with the sponsoring ship agency. I mean, that's kinda written, but doesn't mean that's what it's gonna be. I mean, I'm sure somebody out there can assist us and, and all of that. So.
I also wanted to check with Brennan. Brennan, do you have any other concerns about the financial side of this? Cause I mean, this is, this is gonna be a lot of work if it takes off on somebody's plate.
No.
He said no.
The five percent rule, that's all we gotta worry about.
Yeah, I think once we decide that, and then it's just, you know, in and tracking. If it's set on a specific timeline, we'll have a contract that'll be sitting there that outlines everything. We're just kinda trying to load all the pieces in there so that that contract would be easy for us to do, is just negotiating um, sponsorship in time. And then everything else should already be decided in that, where it's like, what, what does that mean? Plaque, naming, you know, all those pieces. Just like some of them say that if somebody sponsors um, for naming rights on the football field, that they mentioned at the beginning, at the end of each quarter, at halftime, at the end of the game, that sponsor in the announcements, you know, so. Um, there's all these little things um, in there, so. But I think just digging into it and putting together somewhat what I did, it, um, it, it's just scratching the surface of, of what we can do and the additional uh, elements that we need to identify. Cause I mean, even then, we need, you know, brochures, stuff that says what, what that means. Um, and the other piece would be is possibly having to figure out um, if, if they do it, is it to tax deductible? If it's accepted by the school, or do we have to establish a uh, foundation? That is a five oh one C three.
We already have, we're already taxed.
Which would give them the tax abatement if they did the nomination. So a couple of things to look at as well. Cause I saw some of them had foundations, so it would be, you know, like um.
Like the TIP foundation would, would potentially, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, there was like a, the, I'll just throw out, you know, the new Breemian, new Breeman local school foundation. Um, and they had their final one C three that would uh, accept the sponsorships. Those negotiated by the school. So.
That's a lot of work to set up. I'm not saying we can't do it, but those are a lot of work to set up.
But that was a question I had those, uh, what aspects, you know, can and can't be taxed um, write-offs for, for sponsorships in, in regards to it coming straight to the school or not, and or does it have to have one of those? And I think that's where we had a consultant from Ohio, they would be able to tell us all those pieces. From.
Could we do that in cooperation with somebody like the Miami County Foundation? Or Tip City?
I'm sure we could.
Under their umbrella?
Uh, I think everything's a possibility. So if anybody out there in the community knows uh, people that work specifically in that arena, please um, send your information to uh, FercsJ@PLSK12.org. To assist us. Okay, any other conversation or comments in regards to the naming rights? I mean, we're just working through it, right? Discussion topics, so. All right, next up is uh, D, that's the youth clay shooting club team. I know we've all received numerous emails with regards to this. There, we saw the plan, we saw um, uh, all the emails with regards to um, the, the, the clay shooting club uh, being able to utilize Bepel local schools as part of their name as a team, so they can compete. Um, as well as as it grows in popularity, um, I believe if I recall correctly, O H S S A is looking at possibly turning this into a high school sport as long as there's enough interest. Okay.
Correct.
So really, we're looking for the intent of us, of the board, if that's something that we want them to do. Their requirements is either a letter from the school board or a resolution, or a letter signed by the superintendent agreeing to move forward. Based on their past policies, um, they have to perform for three years as a club before they could become, come on as an actual school program, an extracurricular program.
Correct. Also had some conversations with the potential sponsor uh, of the club. Uh, he also indicated that, you know, the board members may have additional questions that pop up as you guys consider this. He'd be willing to come into a future meeting uh, to do a presentation and take questions and answers, if that would make you guys feel more comfortable during the process.
Well, I, I think the biggest question was the liability, right? Like, what are we looking at for liability?
I, I believe the information that was provided was two million dollars in coverage. Um, but also realize that anytime there's firearms involved, whether it's a youth play shooting club team, or an armed security team in a school system, if something would happen, obviously the school district's gonna be named in some sort of an action.
But the club that US, is the uh, national club that they were going under, um, offered that two million dollars in protection, liability protection. Cause they're just using the school name. And it's not a school sponsored event.
They would still go, they would still go into our risk management insurance.
Yeah, we, yeah, and Brennan said it would still add it to our risk management insurance as well.
It's the same thing as your Bepel, music boosters, Bepel, elementary PTO and Bepel.
Can't hear you, Mr. Fercs.
How's Brennan?
Oh, sorry.
He said he added it, they would add it to our risk management, just like we've done with PTO, um, music boosters, athletic boosters. We just add it uh, to that plan for additional risk protection.
And do we know what the, the cost of that is?
No. Do you think it would be substantial?
She didn't, she didn't say there was additional cost.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't offer any additional cost for it, for adding it when Brennan called.
So what do we need to do then? Do we need to do a resolution that states what you said Jacob, that it's um, using the school name, but not a school sponsored activity?
I think um, it's either us do the resolution, or uh, we, we tell Mr. Fercs that um, he can go ahead and uh, approve it as well. And sign, sign the letter. It talks about it in the, in the form that he'd sent, is it's uh, utilizing the school name only. It says that specifically on the form. If I recall correctly. On the application for them. And he just needs a letter from the superintendent saying um, that the school has approved them to use our name. Just kinda looking at the direction, do we, do we wanna put it on the agenda uh, for us to vote on? Or did we um, want Mr. Uh, allow Mr. Fercs to move forward at his discretion?
Where do you feel more comfortable if we pass it as a resolution?
I mean, I guess it just depends. Do you feel comfortable with the information that you've received so far? Or would you like the potential sponsor to come in and, and speak with you guys if you have any questions in regards to the process? How that's gonna go down as far as selection of students and those kind of things?
I think that would be a good thing.
Okay.
We have no face to put. Yeah, I could have him come to this meeting.
Sounds good. Have him come to the upcoming meeting to give us a presentation? Does that, does that work as well?
Yeah, are you thinking the board meeting or the next work session?
Either or. He indicated to me in my last conversation that this is a spring activity. Um, so uh, time is on our side to a degree. It can be this upcoming board meeting if you'd like, or if you prefer in a work session, that's up to you folks. I'm okay either way.
Since it's in the spring, I would say the work session.
We usually have, the only thing is we usually have more people come to the board meeting, so it might be nice, I don't know. I, I can go either way, it doesn't matter to me.
We do, we do have a higher presence with the regular board meeting than we do at the work session. I mean, there's five people watching on YouTube. Typically at a board meeting, we, we have fifteen to twenty.
I agree with that. I, I mean, I was kinda thinking it, it'd be good at a work session because we don't vote there, we just discuss and then think about it, vote at the next one. But I, I definitely have that as the other side, that there's more people that come to the regular meetings.
Are we not picking an architect?
And we definitely would like to hear community input on this.
That's a meeting on the eighth, the eighth.
So we could pick it. Listening to those.
We hope to have a decision made.
How, how long is the presentation?
I think we get as long or as short as we want.
Presentation, you can make that. Uh, I mean, however you guys want, I mean. There's no specifications on the length of the presentation. I was just throwing it out as a suggestion, if you folks felt like you wanted to get more information, put a face of the name and ask a question type answer stuff. It was just a suggestion, you don't have to do it if you don't see the need.
I think it would be nice to have him in. Justin, why don't you and Brennan see how much we have for the next board meeting? If it looks like we have too much stuff, we'll push it back to the work session, that's easy.
Yeah.
I mean, your board meeting kind of is essentially what's in here.
Right. Given us a report, so.
The only thing that, that's not included in here is your voting principal updates.
Which looks like a, a, looks like it'd be a good meeting to have him come in, actually.
Well, and won't we, won't we be voting on um, the architectural firm as well?
That, that's, I believe we, we discussed that, what we're doing on September eighth is we're reviewing all four and voting.
No, you're, you're gonna, you can select, you can't make, you can't make any formal decisions. You have to do that on the fourteenth.
You have it on the fourteenth, you don't make your decision on the eighth.
You can't make any decisions with the special meeting. You can't say who will and will not select.
You can say they can't vote.
You'll make your selection on the eighth, and then you'll vote for it.
Vote for it on the, yeah, okay, yeah.
And you'll have that, if you want, you can have that decision made that night on who your top firm is, knowing that the fourteenth are gonna be on the agenda for a vote.
Okay, that's, all right, that's appropriate. So it shouldn't, shouldn't affect the fourteenth?
I can reach out to him and see if he's available to be there that evening.
Yeah.
And he can, he could actually do the presentation during my portion of my update. It could be ten minutes long.
I'd say ten minutes would be the, the max, just so that we can, that we can move forward.
Okay. And so maybe if you come with some questions prepared in advance, that might help a little bit too. As far as things that pop up in regards to whatever you, questions you may have with selection process and kids involved and that kind of stuff.
I would say if he had a.
Where they compete at, what kinda safety measures are in place, those kind of things.
Yeah. It'd be nice if you kinda had all that outlined as well.
Okay.
How they're, you know, they're, how that club's gonna operate, selection.
I'll talk to them tomorrow and see if they can put something together and then try to get that to you at a time so you can review it.
I, I would bet he has something prepared.
I do too.
I mean, he's done this before, right? So.
Based on all the stuff that, that he's submitted, so.
I'll, I'll reach out to him tomorrow, speak with him, see if he can get something either prepared, or if he's already got it and prepared to send it to me via email, and then I'll shoot it out to you guys so you can have it in advance. So if any questions pop up between receiving it and the meeting, you can ask some questions prepared for it.
And give him a time limit, right?
Yeah, ten minutes.
Perfect.
Okay, all right. Um, so we already did land it, we had uh, three add-ons. Oh, that was already on there, so. Oh, supplemental contracts, you had the MOU, um. Rubrics? Yeah. I didn't, um.
Uh, for Lyda and Lori and Julie, Brennan is uh, scanning it in right now. And he is going to email it out to you three, so you have it. Uh, Jacob's actually taken a screenshot of it as well, and I think he's probably gonna text it to you. This is obviously just a rough draft. It came from OFCC. Um, it's kind of their scoring rubric when they're involved in CFAT projects for the selection of architectural firms. OFCC oftentimes is involved from the very get-go when it's CFAT, because there's state dollars that are involved. Learned a little bit different category of being an elk project and using the certificates of participation. So with that being said, you can take some of the things that are in here, tell me what you like about it, what you don't like about it. Uh, OFCC sent it to me in a PDF, they really wouldn't send it to me. Uh, Della was able to take that and recreate it, which I would have no clue how to do what she did, an Excel file, which credit to her. And then we can, we can change it and make it look however you see fit, uh, as far as what you wanna use to score and identify now. A couple of terms on the uh, architect engineer rating firm that you may not be as familiar with. Um, would be like four B, where it indicates LEED, L E E D. Lead projects have to do with uh, energy conservation in districts. So like, for example, I think when Milton Union built their district, uh, built their building, they did some water conservation projects. Uh, there are other districts that have used solar panels or wind turbines. Um, you don't have to include that, but I do think one of the facility members, I believe Mr. Ruckel brought that, or Caleb, uh, Ruckel brought that up in regards to that. So that's what LEED registered means. It's the certification that architectural firms have that show that they have the necessary qualifications to do those types of projects. Uh, yeah, that's one I'm gonna have to look into. I'm not so sure what BIM projects are. But I guess you get the idea of what OFCC looks for when they score a company, so they. So they look at obviously proximity of the firm to the project site. They look at the mileage away from, uh, where you're at from the school. I think that comes into play as far as customer service and availability. Um, they also look at the number of contracts they've been awarded, how active they are. The number of licensed professionals, whether it's engineers, architects, um, HVAC, plumbing, uh, communications, those kind of things that they feel districts need to successfully, um, maneuver through a project. They also look at the technical staff. They look at the, who your project management lead is, who the design is. Um, they also take a look at their, their previous performances and how they've done as far as reference checks. Um, they look, take a look at budgets and schedule management. They take a look at their involvement or knowledge of uh, the OFCC and Ohio capital improvement processes. They take a look at, uh, project delivery and, and delivery of materials during the construction process. The organization, the team, et cetera. So that's just the rough outline that OFCC provides. You can take it or flip it or modify it or change it. You kind of tell me if you like it or don't like it, or if you want it to look totally different. I'm, I'm completely open to what you guys want, but wanted to at least put this together for you so you could give me some feedback.
Justin, can you tell us about three B? Edge certified, that acronym.
Yeah, that would be, so the BIM and the edge would be the two that I'm going to need to do some homework on and figure with that, figure out what that is. But what I can do is call Valerie tomorrow, Montoya. Uh, she's been great. I'll ask her what those two things are and I'll send it out to you in an email and then you can see if that applies to our project or not.
I just looked.
BIM is, uh, Building Information Modeling is an intelligent 3D model-based process that gives architect engineers and construction professionals the insight and tools to more efficient plan, design, construct, and manage building infrastructure.
There you go.
It's the cool videos they show us.
Alright, so I guess when you're on there, can you tell us what edge means?
I'm, I'm working through it now. It's encouraging diversity, growth, and equity programs established an annual goal for state agencies, boards, and commissions as well as guidelines for state universities and awarding contracts to certified edge businesses. It's encouraging diversity, growth, and equality. From, it's Ohio's.
So like I said, you can take a look, you, the, I think the two that we didn't know, we found out, which was awesome. You guys could take a look at it and see if you want me to add more or change it or not use it, or if you want to see something else done. But I, I do think it's important to at least have some sort of a scoring rubric when you go through the four interviews so that, uh, that can help drive some of the discussion at the end of those interviews, uh, during the selection, unless you feel differently, and I'm open to that as well.
I, I like it. I mean, I, I agree with you. We have, we should have something, but so I would think if you're, if you could add to it, just make sure that the list of topics that we sent out to be covered by them are covered somehow in here.
Yeah, that was one of the, that's a good point. That's one of the things, uh, that I thought about, uh, today. Uh, after Della had kind of created it and, and gave it to me. Um, having reflected on her doing this for me, uh, one of the first things that popped up was, okay, we gave them nine or ten things. I got to figure out a way to kind of incorporate that as well because those are kind of some of the things that we were looking at, so. I don't know.
And I think, I think some of them are in here. The, the other thing, the only thing that concerns me about using a point system is you know, I, I hope we just don't go by points.
I think, I think your overall point system helps guide us to specific criteria, um, to help with the decision-making process.
Agreed. But, but I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you can have a, a firm that, that may meet all these things, but you know, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, obviously.
Tell me in my gut, right? I, I go on gut feel a lot.
I mean, your own personal opinions will be shared as well. I think it's just kind of trying to provide a, um, a framework.
Fair enough. Exactly. That's exactly what I was saying.
I'm not saying that subtotal is the end-all be-all, but I think it puts all of us on the same level playing field as far as some of the things that we're looking for, uh, when we're listening to each of the four firms.
Yeah, I think you put it perfectly. It's a framework.
I had, I had one question and I, I don't know the answer. At, at least in the past, architects took a flat fee of the total project. I think it was eleven percent historically. I'm assuming that's still the case. Is there any leeway, any of the four? I mean, I don't know if that needs to be a question, but obviously that's a big chunk of money on a roughly thirty million dollar project. So I, I just, I want to ask that or have that incorporated.
You know, with it not being, with it being an elk project, I think, I, I'll have to check. But the last time I was involved in a building project, project, I think that was, that was left up to your, once you selected your firm of your negotiations as far as the contract. You know, I don't think it's, there's a state law that says eleven percent across the board. Um, I think that's just part of.
Yeah, that would be the question though, right? What is the percentage?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say all those questions are, are questions to ask and have those in advance, things that pop up because I think that's going to be part of your decision-making process as well.
So I don't know if you, you want to put that on the sheet, but that, that was something that I thought of this past week or two. I was like, that's kind of important because eleven percent, i- i- if it could be reduced to seven percent, I mean, that's a significant chunk of change.
Correct. So the firm percentage of the project costs essentially is what you're looking, asking, right?
Yes.
And I think those are all very good questions to come in, uh, to the meetings with ahead of time. I mean, obviously, things are going to be said during the interview that may turn into a question, but I think if you had some consistent questions across all four and kind of get their answers, it's going to help hopefully differentiate the four forms from each other as well.
Yeah, we can almost maybe change the, uh, one B. Kind of touched on that, and that's the amount of fees awarded by contracting authority in the previous twenty-four months. Um, to, you know, percentage wise, and that'll tell us those dollars.
Sure.
Something to that effect, so kind of there, we're just getting more direct in it. Be good though, because those fees also tell us about change order fees and, and other portions of extenuating cost.
Yeah, I think those are all very good questions asked as well, you know, what are the number of change orders they average, you know, as far as budgets? They come in under, over, on time, or I shouldn't say on time, but on budget. You know, time schedules, are they, you know, ahead of time, on time, late? I mean, I think all those things and getting the history, I'll also share with you folks and I'll let the facilities committee know. I'm still waiting on one, um, but I've called, uh, references on all four firms. I currently have, uh, four references called for each firm, so I have fifteen of them completed. I'm still waiting on the sixteenth for the final firm. And once I get those four completed for each of the four firms, I'll email that out to the board and also the facilities committee, so you can kind of see what some of the, uh, school districts that I've worked with them have said. Uh, I've obviously included the things that went well, and then I tried to also include a consistent area of concern because I also asked her in the process, what are some things concern-wise that, you know, reflecting on the, your prior project? Maybe what, what, what we, what do you wish went differently?
Uh, and I, I would, uh, request that you submit that to us, um, on, at noon on the eight.
Okay.
Don't we want those before that, Jacob?
Um, it's public record requestable and we just said it in the meeting. So any one of those four forums could request any of that information with regards to negative information on the other.
Gotcha.
So it could give them the advantage to, to overstate something. That's the only thing I was thinking of, so that, once it's compiled and ready to be submitted, that it's submitted closer to the day of the meeting so that it doesn't give, uh, an advantage.
Okay.
Those are my thoughts.
Yeah. It's, it's not extremely lengthy. It's about, uh, one page, one page per firm.
It lasts up to you have it there, so when we complete all four, we can also review that.
So I took some, took some notes during a ten-minute conversation with each of those schools, so.
Okay.
And I, I basically focused my area of attention on some of the categories that we're looking at. Communication, budget, uh, design process, um, timeframes, customer service, response time, change orders, those kind of things.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions or comments with regards to, um, the rubics? Ruberics? The Rubik's Cube. Okay. Uh, moving on was the last topic. Uh, it's been brought up in the past. A lot of conversation with regards to, um, drug testing of uh, students, staff, teachers, but mostly, um, students and extracurricular activities.
Correct. Um, just want to preface the conversation with, to the community that this is obviously just a, a opening discussion type matter. Um, we haven't had any prior discussions to this previously, you know, nor do I, I think that we have a, uh, extreme issue with this in our school district. Um, there's nothing that I've been informed of that's led me to believe that we do. I guess part of these work session meetings are to have conversations, uh, with the school board in regards to their thoughts on various potential policies. Um, it is a, a topic that's becoming more prevalent in districts. Uh, I think there are several districts in our area that have implemented similar, uh, policies. And I guess this would be a, a longer drawn-out process if it's something the board would like to pursue. I would fully anticipate that we would have frequent, more prevalent conversations with student athletes, parents, community members to get their input and insight on it. This is just more of an, an opening-type conversation with, uh, a sample that's been put in place to kind of get your thought on if you feel like the district needs to at least continue to have conversations or if you feel like, uh, it's not something that the district would like to explore at this time.
Uh, the, the question that I would say coming out the shoot, right, is what are we to gain from doing?
Well, I mean, I think the, the, one of the first major goals is to establish, uh, a educational environment that's focused in on the safety and security of our students and our staff. I mean, I think we, we currently have a process in place that we do screen new employees to the district to ensure that we have people coming into our district that at the time are clean. I think it also does the same thing, uh, with not only our student athletes but students that are, uh, participating in any type of pro-curricular or extracurricular activity as well as far as creating the best school environment we can, for not only our students but also our staff and our community. That's just my take on this.
That was a phenomenal answer. And that's perfectly in line with our strategic plan and our school values. Does he even have questions?
Well, I, I agree with everything that Mr. Fricks just said. Um, you know, we had talked about this before. I can't remember. I guess it's been a couple of years now. Um, and I think that was kind of cost prohibitive at the time, but I don't remember exactly what we were looking at doing or what the proposal was at the time. But this seemed pretty reasonable, you know, to do some sort of random check and, and limit it, then you know, I think it would be more effective.
Justin, are you familiar with what schools in our area currently, um, have some kind of drug testing program?
Um, I don't, I don't want to say names offhand in case I'm incorrect, uh, but I mean, I'll, I'll throw one out there. I could be wrong, but I, I think one for sure that I believe does is Miami East. It could be incorrect. So, uh, but I would have to, as part of the process, I would also reach out to, uh, neighboring schools that I could, I could get that information to you as well to at least let you know, um, proximity-wise and in the county, how many districts have it in place.
I would appreciate that. I, I think we have great kids, we have a great community, but I also think, you know, if we have, if we do choose some point in the future to implement this, that alone can be a deterrent to, to kids when they know it's there, when they know there's the possibility.
Yeah, and it's, it's not to be big brother and play a I got you moment, um, I, I don't know. Like I said, it's just, it's just a suggestion or something you consider. Uh, if you feel like it's a good fit for the district, we can continue to have further conversations and, you know, we wanted to put this out there to the public and the community so that if there's feelings strongly either direction, they feel comfortable enough to either reach out to me at the school or one of their five school board members, if they feel more comfortable with that, to kind of share their thoughts. Uh, but we do care about, you know, what the community feels as far as policy decisions, ones that, um, are, are pretty big ones. And this would be one I would think would fall into that category. That could, that could draw some strong feelings either way.
I know there's several schools um, in the greater Dayton area that, uh, do the drug testing for athletics. Sorry, Lida.
No, you're okay. I, I guess I would just kind of want to look at the numbers of tests maybe on average given in the state in high schools versus the number of positives or negatives that are found and just see what's the value overall of, of, of doing it? Are there, are we really finding a whole lot and is it really a worthwhile pursuit? I, I, you know?
Okay. I can definitely, uh, find that out or try to see if the companies that we could take a look at, we provide that information. How many schools they service, how many tests they render, and I guess what, what their rates are of positive and negative.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, especially if we're randomizing it so much. I just, you know.
Yeah, I think too is we'd have to have an adjudication method.
What do you mean by that?
Somebody gets a positive and they're like, I didn't, I haven't done anything. Um, correct, if you're positive, then you're out. You would assume out of the program. And they want to, they want to say that, you know, it's an error at the lab. How do I adjudicate the positive, right?
Gotcha.
I think it's like hair sampling, you know, I think it's just a different test they could do.
Correct.
Regards to that, but to identify, how do you, um, contest the positive?
I was thinking exactly that as I looked at the list, as I looked at the list of drugs here, and the last one's nicotine. That is, that was one that stuck out to me too, is like.
So common, it's legal.
Yeah.
The, 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 uh, students' parents may be smoking in the house.
Oh, you get contact?
Yeah, sure, secondhand smoke.
I'll be, I'll be upfront, that was one where I, I borrowed this policy from a school district, uh, when I was typing it out. I did, that was the one that, like, ooh, there's some pretty hard, hard hitters on there, and then I saw that one. And, uh, I'm not saying it's not something that you can deter kids from doing, but uh, definitely, it definitely is a little on a different level than methamphetamine, so.
Is there any benefit to the students when they pursue, um, different schools or scouts or scholarships or anything to be able to show that they've been consistently tested? Is there anything like that that, that benefits them at all in doing this?
I think it takes the guesswork out of it, especially, um, I mean, I, one of the things I, I was looking at was, you know, including, uh, anabolic steroids. Um, that would help add a benefit that their performance is not, not, you know, that they've been not utilizing that to enhance their performance for college scouts.
I never thought of that once again.
Because we're looking at athletics, I mean, athletic performing, you know, illegal performance enhancing drugs. And then now, then help show like they, you know, if I was a scout and the school had that program and they had been randomly tested. I, I don't know, I think it would help show that, you know, though, shows you a side that a scout or a coach at the next level wouldn't be able to see. Um, other than, you know, that piece, they were ones and ones selected.
We could, you know, I hate to keep throwing these kind of things on you, and obviously, you know, we said it, we continue to have conversations on these things uh, throughout the course of the year, but in a future work session, you, you may be able to have a company come in and do a short ten, fifteen-minute presentation on it and you can ask a few questions.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. I think once we kind of get to it, if we feel like we still need to move in this direction, you know, an opportunity for community comment, like you said, with regards to the policy, um, and then, um, and then move out. I don't think it'll, will be able to impact this collegiate school year. Unlikely it'll be for the follow-on year, so.
I, I would, I would say if, if you, if the school board does decide that this is the direction they want to go, you would look at it for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I don't think it's anything you would want to put in place now. I don't think it's something you want to put in place now.
Well, and Lyda, you had asked for benefits to students. I mean, hopefully all these tests will come back negative. But let's say we get one or two positives. Maybe we'll get the student the help they need while they're still at home. Before they go off to college or wherever they're headed. I mean, this is a time in life where people can make major changes if they're, if they're um. Motivated to do that. I mean, the longer if somebody has a drug problem, it goes on, it's, it's harder to break. So I think that would be another benefit.
Yeah. Agreed, agreed. I mean, I, absolutely. And I know, but we're also bumping up our counseling and staff. And, and our teachers I know are looking out for more and more of that every day. Because I, as a teacher, I was definitely taught to look out for those sorts of things and to watch out for changes in my students' behavior, changes in their friends group. I mean, this is what teachers do every day. And I, I understand that. I'm, I'm just thinking if the numbers, if we're testing, say 200 kids a year. Randomly, you know, five a week, 40 weeks, whatever, however it works out, I just don't know if we're gonna find, you know, enough. That's, I guess, my question.
Or if that's adequate, the right number, yeah.
Right, right.
Uh, what is the correct numbering to determine um, a valid program?
Right. Much like many of our other board members, I'm kind of a numbers girl and I just, I just don't know if the numbers are going to weigh out for it to really be a benefit. I, you know, and if it's really going to be a help to our students, that's all, ultimately everything we do is to help our students and our staff. And I, I just want to see if it would be that. That's all.
Yeah. One other question, who pays for it?
Um, well, I think I included it there. Uh, did I include it in my email?
In your email?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, you did.
I think it's $16 a test. Uh, they would do it three times a year, fall, winter, spring, six students per time. So six times. $96 times three.
$288.
Yeah, $288 divided by the school would pay for half, the athletic department would pay for half, $144 a year.
So the, the athletic department come out there, part, portion would come out of their budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Athletics and then you're testing school related activities.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not adding the burden to the student.
Like I said, $288 a year. So you're not, you're not looking at an extreme cost.
Yeah, based on the proposed number.
Yeah, that number, like you said, that number.
Change based on.
Mrs. Mansfield said it, you don't feel like six of them are not, I mean, I think you have some flexibility in that. So.
Yeah.
Just depends on how many you want to test each time.
I think it'd be just the number of students enrolled in that sporting activity for that section of the school year. And then there'd be some type of rubrics of what percentage.
Yeah, they, you essentially send a, a database to the company and then their computer shoots through a, you know, blind draw. Yeah, and then they, they give you the names a week ahead of time. You know, you work through that process. And they come out and handle all the testing and it takes the school out of the equation as far as essentially all you are is the testing location. Because it's done here at school.
Right. Oh, it's here. So uh, I think the other piece too, there's a random as well. I mean, is there a spot in, we, would you consider moving it to even um. You know, a process, will we include a process for a named person to be tested? For example, if the, if the coach is getting a lot of feedback from the other players, that this person hasn't been selected. But they keep, you know, they're hearing that they're utilizing these other items that they shouldn't be. Um, is there a process for the coach to pick somebody or do we want to just totally walk away from that and just play the random? Mechanism?
I think that'd be a, a question and a conversation you probably want to have through legal tells.
Yeah. I think just that piece would just be so convoluted and difficult to step through versus the random.
I think the districts that have done it, traditional like the random to try to.
Leave it at that and be done?
That the uh, maybe we're not uh, isolating or, or picking off certain individual students.
Okay.
I think they let the company do the draw and.
Just let it at that?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds great.
But I, if I had to guess, if you would ask John, he'd probably say let the company decide who the draws are.
Yeah. Any other questions? Do you, do you think we need to continue um, moving forward with further information with regards to, to this? Okay, I see you come ahead, Jacob.
Okay. Like I said, if, if we get more information, we'll continue to have more discussions. And if any parents uh, that are listening or, or hear about it or check the recording and listen, want to reach out to either myself. Uh, via email, farksj@blsk12.org or one of your individual five board members that you've elected. In regards to your thoughts or concerns on the topic, uh, we strongly encourage you to, whether you feel good about it or have some concerns about it.
Yeah, definitely. I think we, you know, community input is really important with regards to this and, and opinion. Of, of what our community thinks is the most appropriate action for us to take, so. There'll be an opportunity, I think, if this does continue to move forward, for the community to sit down and provide input in a meeting. Uh, or virtually, but um, getting it earlier is better than later.
Yeah.
Alright, I think we hit all our topics. Do you include our additional ones? Is there a need for executive session? Hearing none? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
This is Lyda. I'll move.
Alright, thank you, Lyda. Do we have a second?
Julie, I'll second.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question.
Okay.
Since I didn't make it in today and I had, had a lot of trouble hearing. I know some of it's probably part of my computer. But Jacob, I can hear you clearly the whole time. So what's our microphone situation?
Yeah, it's sitting right in front of me. That's why I think you hear me the most.
Right, I, I thought we were going to get some satellite ones to put along the table.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think uh, our IT is still working on that.
Okay, excellent.
Because I know our community wants to also see us talking when we're here. It shows several of the schools is blank and being able to see this and also see the room. I think that's important as well.
Yeah.
I think Brian, our IT director is looking into um, the potential, uh, what, what does that system look like? So.
I'll follow up with them tomorrow and see where they're at.
I mean, I did a Google search on it myself and I, and I got about nine million different ways to do this. So I was kind of going, I'm looking for a suggestion. I'm just gonna step away.
Yep, I know there's a lot of them out there.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
Alright.
But I would agree, the sooner the better. We can get it fixed. It's not ideal, so.
Alright. Brendan, can you tell a roll?
Ms. Mansfield?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Eel?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at uh, 7:25 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.